To let your inspiration precede this council's actions and all present here today, and your assistance further us so that every word and work of ours may take its beginning from you, and so begun may through you reach its completion. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Bergen, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Holman.
Present.
Mrs. Mills.
Here.
Mrs. Haynes-Zojakamo.
Here.
Mrs. Foglio.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Spielman.
Here.
Mr. Roskovic.
Here.
Mr. Timmonier.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Mrs. Augustin.
Yeah.
Okay, we have met the requirements of the sunshine law. We have a full council this evening. At this time, we are going to deviate a little bit from our regularly set agenda. We are going to have a presentation of a resolution and then I believe a plaque also. And then we will go back to our regular council agenda. But at this time, Mr. Spielman of the Safety Forces Committee and Mrs. Foglio, who used to be one of our court employees, will be presenting a resolution to Lieutenant Dennis Dibble, who has retired from our police department after many years of service.
Lieutenant Dibble, you didn't think we were going to do this without a little roast?
Oh, Jesus.
Because the old goat here has been here when Lieutenant Dibble came over from the sheriff's department to the police department many, many, many years ago. And I remember him as being very matter-of-factly... Now, see, he's smiling now, but he wasn't that way when he first came here. See? See? He was very, very, very safe, I would have to say. And when he'd come up to the court, he would be very, very straight. And it took us a long, long time to chisel at him to get him to this point where he's smiling and joking with us. But Lieutenant Dibble, you've had a wonderful career with the police department, and you've done, you've done so many things. And he's not done yet, though. But his, as one door closes, another door opens. And he, I see he was just sworn in by our sheriff, Bill Neme, and he is going out to the Ashbilla County Joint Vocational School as their resource officer, which is going to be a total 360.
It is.
As, as what he's been doing now, so good luck with that. So, we're going to give you this resolution as a wonderful closure to your career and ending to your book here with the city of Ashbilla. And we so appreciate everything that you did for the city, all the overtime that you were called out on in the days that you didn't think you were going to make it through, but you did. And the stress of being a police officer these days as well as those days when you came in very straight are still so much. So, we so appreciate everything that you've done. And now, Mr. Spielman will read your resolution and the end to your chapter.
All right. Resolution number 2023-118. A resolution honoring Lieutenant Dennis Dibble's years of service and dedication to the city of Ashbilla. Whereas, it has come to the attention of this city council and these public officials of the city of Ashbilla, Ohio, that a special recognition is in order. And whereas, Lieutenant Dennis Dibble has been a city of Ashbilla police officer for 33 years. And whereas, he began his career with the Ashbilla City Police Department in 1990 as a patrolman and was assigned as field training officer. And whereas, through his 33 years of service to the city of Ashbilla, he has had many accomplishments and promotions. And whereas, his accomplishments include, in part, his promotion to sergeant and assignment as patrol shift supervisor, promotion to lieutenant, assignment to the detective bureau as evidence officer, evidence room technician, becoming a member of the Narcotics Investigation Unit, APD NIU, and designation as a detective division commander. And whereas, his service and support of the city of Ashbilla through his 33 years of service has been of great value to our city. And now, therefore, be it resolved that this city council and these public officials of the city of Ashbilla, Ohio, do hereby convey to Lieutenant Dennis Dibble our heartfelt appreciation and commendation for his service to the city of Ashbilla, and we wish Lieutenant Dibble a great retirement. Thank you for believing in Ashbilla. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations, man. What an accomplishment. Thank you for all your service. I see where you're pushing. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate this. So, I'd like to say a few things here. First off, I want to thank the city of Ashbilla for giving me the opportunity to have a really great career here for 33 years. I'd also like to thank previous chief, David Calusi, for giving me the opportunity to work for the city of Ashbilla. I'd like to thank Tustel for the many years of service that we've had together and for him believing in me, giving me the opportunity to do a lot, a lot of the things that I have done. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Check, check. So, a few things about Lieutenant Dibble. Now, he was a patrolman when I started here. He was a training officer. He was my training officer. So, I just want to say that he was the toughest training officer I had. And I'm sure that some, some of the gray hairs on the side there, I gave, I'm pretty sure I gave those to you. He went, yeah, a few times, he let me know. But in all these areas where, as were mentioned, as training officer, sergeant, lieutenant, division commander, evidence officer, he excelled in every one of those areas. One area in particular I think I want to mention is the evidence, the evidence room, which sounds like it's kind of dry and boring, but it's really a critical part of what we do. Obviously, we need, we need good evidence. And if anybody's ever seen the show Hoarders, that's what our evidence room looked like when, when, when Dennis took it over. It'd been, you know, we, we had stuff down there from the early 1980s, I think, if I recall. So, I, I went to Dennis. I said, hey, is there, do you think you can get this taken care of? And he said, well, chief, I can, but it's going to take me a few years. And I said, all right, well, and it did, but he stayed right on it steadily. And I'd say about two to three years, we had that thing. It's all, you go down there now, it's pristine, everything's computerized, it's easy to find things, and it's, it's been, it's been really nice. But again, in, in every area, he's done, he's done very well for us. And I think it's also worth mentioning that just in a few weeks he's been gone, we've realized how much stuff he did that we didn't even think about. Like, boy, there's a lot, there's a lot of things there that, that he did for the department. I know he spent a good, a good part of this past year getting the department prepared for his, for his departure, which says a lot about the kind of employee he was. And he's been a great help, and he's still helping us now. We call him sometimes, say, hey, we need, we need some help on something, and he's more than happy to help us out. So, I want to present you with this plaque. It says, "In recognition and thanks for 33 years of dedicated service to the city of Ashbilla Police Department, 1990 through 2023." Thank you.
We are going to continue on with our meeting at this time. I would entertain a motion to enter into an executive session, a brief executive session, to discuss the purchase of property.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Miss, Mrs. Foglio and a second by Mr. Crawford. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Haynes-Zojakamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio.
Yes.
Mr. Crawford.
Yes.
Mr. Spielman.
Yes.
Mr. Roskovic.
Yes.
Ms. Holman.
Yes.
We will go into executive session briefly at this time. We, we usually don't like to do this, but things are just so busy with the city at this time of year that we find it necessary to inter, interrupt our agenda at this time with an executive session. That will be, council will be joined by our solicitor and our treasurer, Mrs. Bergen, and representatives of Rising Sun Property, Mr. Barton and Mr. Schlosser. So, we will do that at this time, and hopefully we'll be back in a matter of a few minutes. Thank you.
Our meeting at seven thirty-five, I apologize for the interruption, like I said, it's been such a busy year for us and so we appreciate your patience with us, we want to keep things moving. So at this time, we have minutes to approve?
Yes, August seventh, twenty twenty-three, regular council meeting was called to order at seven P M. by Council President Raskovics. Mrs. Foglio offered the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present were Mr. Raskovics, Mr. Spielman, Mrs. Foglio, Mr. Crawford, Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. Haines De Giacomo. Absent was Ms. Holman. Officers present were City Manager Tim Munir, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bergen. And then the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, emergency council meeting was called to order at four P M. by Council President Raskovics. We observed a moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Members present were Mr. Raskovics, Mr. Spielman, Mrs. Foglio, Mrs. Mills, and Mrs. Haines De Giacomo. Absent were Mr. Crawford and Ms. Holman. Officers present were City Manager Tim Munir, City Solicitor Cooper, Finance Director Augustine, and Clerk of Council Bergen.
Thank you. May I have a motion regarding the reading of the minutes in their entirety?
Second.
Ms. Holman moved?
Yes.
And Ms. Mills second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading by a seven to zero vote. At this time, we will have the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like an ordinance to enter into agreement with Rocky Road Paving of Geneva, Ohio, for the purpose of providing road restorations to select streets within the city limits in accordance with the proposals provided for the twenty twenty-three Round Two road restoration in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars. Funding for this expense will be taken from the following funds: five thousand eight hundred dollars from Fund Five-oh-three and sixteen thousand two hundred dollars from Fund Four-one-two.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Foglio, a second by Mr. Crawford, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Best Truck Equipment of Painesville, Ohio, for the purchase of a Skag turf tiger mower in the amount not to exceed thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Funding for this expense will be taken from the Water Pollution Control Fund Five-oh-four.
Move on the manager's request.
Second.
Mr. Spielman moves, Mrs. Mills seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Next, I would like an ordinance to enter into an agreement with Eclipse Company, L L C, of Chagrin Falls, Ohio, as the most responsible bid in the amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars for the Highland Beach Storm Sewer Outfall Project. Funding for this expense will be taken from Fund Four-one-two.
Mr. President? I move on the manager's recommendation.
Ms. Foglio moves?
Second.
Mrs. Mills second. Mr. Timmaner, would this be a this-year project, this summer project?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
And lastly, I'd like an ordinance to accept a FEMA grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-five cents for the purchase of personal protective equipment and SCABA units for the City of Ashtrabula Fire Department.
Mr. President? I move on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Mrs. Foglio moves and Mr. Spielman seconds, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Mr. President, this is all for my report, just a couple of announcements. First off, you've probably seen Dominion out there in several areas of the city doing gas line replacements. One area they're working heavily in, they're in Ward Four, but they're also in Ward One around the West Thirteenth area, they'll be putting gas lines in, doing boring under the tree lawns there. They also have used Nappy Field as a staging area where they have some of the pipes that will be going into the project. Just a quick paving update, we are closing, we're getting ready to close out the State Route Twenty, State Route Eighty-four project, there's just a couple of other things to touch up on that project before it's completely closed out. For our project, for the regular twenty twenty-three paving project, we still have some painting to do, we have a ton of manhole adjustments that we've provided a list for the contractor to make sure those are addressed. We're hoping that some of the striping will be done this week, weather permitting here, so we're working with the contractors to make sure they come out and do that. Lastly, there's also been a lot of questions about the former Harbor High School football field, a lot of rumors circulating around about what that project's going to be. As we have reported here several times at council, the land bank currently owns that property, it was donated to the land bank, they originally did a request for qualifications to developers to see who was capable of doing a project there, two developers were selected to then provide proposals to the land bank, the land bank is currently reviewing those proposals, so nothing has been set, it's not a dollar store, which is everybody's famous comment, for all of the millions of dollars worth of development that we have going on here in the city. I do anticipate this will be a really, really nice project, once it's completed, or once a developer is selected, both developers have a long history, some of which they have actually done construction here in the city as well, so again, nothing has been decided, the land bank will be reviewing those proposals here shortly. Mr. President, this is all for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Timmaner. Any comments or questions for the manager? I would just like to say, I saw, I've been mentioning this, I saw whoever, kinetic, whatever, some kind of trucks, working on some telephone poles, but they still have a lot of telephone poles to work on, so if we could just keep encouraging whoever to fix the telephone pole.
We're beyond the encouraging point, and I think the solicitor can testify that my emails have not been kind for the last couple of months with our utility companies and bouncing back and forth, and we're trying to explore other means to get these, get them to do their job.
Thank you, yeah, I saw them doing a few, but somebody had a picture on the Facebook, one that was duct taped, I mean, there was duct tape all around the telephone pole.
I don't think that one was in the city, somebody sent me that.
Oh, did they send it to you? But I have seen, I know it's.
They've done crazier things.
Station and Twenty and down Lake Avenue, they're just all over, it's bad, so I'm glad you are working on that, I appreciate it, and I know there are residents who appreciate that also. Anybody else? Mrs. Cooper?
I do not have a report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Ms. Augustine?
Yes, Mr. President, we're requesting an ordinance to make supplemental increases to appropriation to the general fund, public health, court special project, sanitation fund, police fund, housing code enforcement, and waste water management in the amount of six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to one hundred and seventy-three-six.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I move on the Finance Director's recommendation.
And I'll second.
Mrs. Foglio moves, and Ms. Jane Haines De Giacomo seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Holman?
Yes, Mr. Augustine, I just want to say, I oftentimes cringe when I hear such large amounts of changes, but I want to appreciate for the level of specificity as to why it's warranted, so thank you for that.
You want me to go through?
No, you have already have, thank you.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, because I provided all the documentation.
It's appreciated, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Augustine. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add it to our agenda by a seven to zero vote. And Mrs. Bergen, I think we're, have nothing this evening?
Correct.
Thank you. We do have a few community, committee reports, we will begin with community and economic development.
So we had a meeting, and Ryan Welpe from the Ashtrabula County District Library was our guest. I think the biggest takeaway is how much our library offers, if you are a card-carrying member of the library and you go on to their main website, you can, there's Hoopla, there's Libby, there's North Star Digital Literacy, there's LinkedIn Learning, Peterson's Test and Career Prep, Cultural grams, if you are wanting to prepare yourself for the A C T or S A T exam, there's just so, there's so much our library offers. One thing that he talked about, which you do have to go in person, they have a whole grant program there, so if you have an organization and you need grant funding, go to your local library, they can help you out, and they've invested in this program so that we have this, these resources, and everybody knows I love the library and I'm a huge supporter, so go get a library card and support our library. We also had, Margaret Disler gave a report from Parks and Recreation, and Julie Wyman, who we're gonna have every month, from My Neighborhood Collaborative Giving Reports. And our next meeting is gonna be at four-thirty, we're changing the time, we are gonna have it right here where we have City Council, so that it can be on Facebook, this is to help me, because we're not gonna have our Clerk of Council, because she's gonna be having a baby, but it, so our meetings, starting in September, will again be on Facebook, and I know, I know the manager thinks that we only have six people that watch, but I know in my heart, there's six hundred of you out there watching, and I appreciate it.
There's currently five.
Thank you, Ms. Jane Haines De Giacomo, thank you. We have a finance report from Mrs. Foglio.
Yes, we do. Ms. Haines, your report was really short, I thought you said it was twenty-six pages.
I just did that to torture.
Well, it was very good. Okay, the Finance and Personnel Committee met on Friday, August sixteenth. Our Finance Director, Mrs. Augustine, began by stating that our statement of cash position is good. She is still working on the issues with the Health Department and still waiting for payments from the E C I D funds, which I think you, you might have did that already, the Health Department, did you?
Yes, 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 it's part of the request.
Right, for the ordinance tonight. We looked at the expenditure report as a whole, we are doing okay. Next, we looked at the appropriations report, and we have many appropriations to request tonight, which she already did. Money must be moved around so that at the end of the month, no accounts were in the negative. The appropriations requests will be five hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and seven dollars and thirty-six cents, that might not be the right number.
Yes, 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 because after that, I had something for the Police Department that I added today.
That's okay, to cover our expenses through the end of the year. The committee went over the audit, which is not published yet. Mrs. Augustine highlighted certain important information in the audit so that the committee had a better understanding of what the audit is stating. The Fire Department stated, oh, no, I'm sorry, the Finance Director stated that we have a collection of, we have collected thirty-four thousand dollars in back income taxes. We had a resident who received unpaid, an unpaid tax letter from the A G.'s office. This was a one-time overlooked situation where the tax form was filed in two thousand and fifteen, but the check was either filed, lost, or not filed. The resident never received a letter and didn't know he owed the tax. Furthermore, in two thousand and eighteen, the resident had an overpayment that was owed and applied to the unpaid taxes, and again, did not receive a letter. The letter was not sent advising him of the refund or the remaining balance. Fast forward to today, when he received a letter stating that he owes over eighteen hundred dollars in taxes and over fifteen hundred dollars in fees. The resident did pay his taxes immediately to the A G.'s office, but is questioning the fees. He is asking what can be done. After much discussion, it was decided that the resident should file an appeal, and his case should be brought before the Income Tax Review Board, and any other person that questions their income tax will be brought before the Income Tax Review Board once we get aboard. The City Manager reported that we received another FEMA assistant grant for the firefighters for S C B A equipment, which is tanks and air packs, the current ones are fifteen years old. We just received over a hundred and fifty- We just received over $155,000 for this equipment. Our out-of-pocket expense will be only $7,000, which I think it might have been a little over that. We congratulate the fire department for receiving this grant. The fire department will also have an entrance exam for firefighters on September 30th. Applications are due on September 24th. We passed two pieces of legislation on Friday evening for our insurance coverage for police and general liability. Our law enforcement insurance increased over this past year due to increased scrutiny across the country. Coupled with the increased property costs due to replacement costs and rising auto book rates, our insurance rose over $100,000 more than last year. In new business, Mrs. Cooper reviewed the codified ordinance 1517 regarding residency. The Ohio Revised Code states that people who work for the government of the state and municipalities and counties can live anywhere they wish. There is no residency requirements except for emergency personnel. They must reside, reside in the city or adjacent counties. This is so that in a case of an emergency, they can be called back. Our ordinance at this time requires that all department heads of all departments to have to reside in an adjacent county. A couple of years ago, there was an Ohio Supreme Court decision that involved an ordinance similar to ours in another city, and they declared it unconstitutional because it infringed on the person's freedom to live and travel wherever they want. Our ordinance is not in compliance with the most recent Ohio Supreme Court decision as it currently requires all department heads to either live in the city or in an adjacent county. Mrs. Cooper stated that it makes perfect sense if they had to get back here if there was a crisis of some kind before everyone learned how to telecommunicate during COVID. Now that everyone has the ability to do Zoom, Teams, or log in from home, it does not make sense that a department head would have to live that close. In trying to come into compliance and upgrade to the modern era, the solicitor's office is suggesting the ordinance be repealed and replaced with the suggested updated ordinance. This would leave the police department, fire department, Public Works, water pollution, and elected officials, and exclude everyone else. So at this time, I am bringing this out of committee and making a motion to repeal codified ordinance 157.17 for residency and replace it with the new ordinance, section 157.107, in order to update the residency requirement of non-emergency department heads slash personnel of the city of Ashtria.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, and a second by Mrs. Haines De Giacomo to bring out a committee, those two ordinances, a repealing and a replacement. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I do have a question. While in your description, you mentioned that because of technology, we have the tools to communicate. My wondering is, at what point in time will those tools be available? Because if they're mentioned that we can, do we actually have the technology to be able to do that?
Oh, sure. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Cooper.
I don't know, because I don't think we have Teams or, I think in some of those programs.
During COVID, we, we did everything through the computer, all of our meetings.
So you're saying that those technology tools, we have access to? I'm sure Zoom is not such a big deal, but Teams and something else was mentioned.
Well, and the idea.
Yes, ideal, understood.
The idea of the ordinance is that if there were an emergency, instead of a department head, other than those departments, having to come into the office in a snowstorm, they could instead.
Communicate.
Communicate either by telephone, or by Zoom, or by.
Some other means.
Yeah. Facebook Messenger, you know, camera, telephone camera, I can't remember the name. But there are other methods for them to communicate instead of making the department heads live so close that they can get. That's, that's the main focus of the change in the ordinance.
Got it.
Ms. Holman, that's it.
Thank you.
Some department heads will still have to live continuously to the county, and some that are not involved so much will, will not. Okay. All right, we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That'll be added to our agenda by a seven to zero vote.
Okay.
And our next meeting was scheduled for September 15th. I will not be here unless an emergency comes up. Our next meeting will be October 20th at 8:30.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crawford?
Currently, Public Works has its next meeting scheduled for August 28th, but we are waiting to see if we have a guest. So currently, we're saying August 28th at 5:00 PM in the August Police Conference Room.
Okay. Mr. Spielman, Safety Forces?
We are scheduled to meet Monday morning at 8:45, and we'll meet upstairs in the conference room.
Thank you, Mr. Spielman. And then there was, there was a planning commission meeting. Again, we had two sort of back-to-back. The Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for the Samaritan House to move to Main Street in the old, well, it used to be the Snodgrass Building, and it's on the corner of Main and 40-something, 40. It's, it's, you know where they're tearing down all the plaza? It's the building next to that. And this will be the, this will be the new Samaritan House. It'll really double in size their ability to help the city residents and those in need. And plus, Mr. Sargent and Ms. Corson were, were very happy that there's more room in there for meetings and services to be provided to the, those people utilizing those services. So the Planning Commission did approve that conditional use permit. The Planning Commission also, once again, tabled a car lot request for Main Street until they can get more specific details about fencing and lighting and all those kinds of things. So those two things happened at the Planning Commission. There was no historic preservation committee meeting. Okay? All right. We have, oh, bless you. We have our legislation tonight. If anyone in the audience would like to comment on any of the legislation, rocky road paving projects, the purchasing of a new lawn mower for the water pollution control. We had a resolution honoring Officer Dibble, an CRA agreement, tax abatement agreement for Nathan and Vicky Belcher on Lake Avenue. The Eclipse Company to repair Highland Beach, making supplemental increases and decreases in our funds through December 31st, accepting a grant from FEMA for the firefight material, writing off delinquent and uncollectible taxes from 1980 to 2010, an ordinance to hire Phyllis Dunlap as our temporary clerk for when our regular clerk goes on leave, repealing the residency requirement ordinance and then replacing the ordinance, repealing an ordinance dealing with property purchase terms, and then authorizing a new ordinance to replace the property purchase agreement for the property for the new city hall offices.
So, do I need to make that motion for that?
We could do that now. You want to do that now, or when we get to?
I do want to do it now.
You want to do that now? All right. So, okay.
How would I word that?
There was two, if you look at your minutes, there was, if you look at your agenda, there's two ordinances, M, ordinance M, and ordinance N.
So it would be ordinance number 2023-130, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase the property from Rising Sun Properties LTD in an amount not to exceed 860 plus closing costs for the purpose of relocating Ashtria City Municipal Offices.
Motion was made?
Second.
Motion was, I'm sorry, what?
I don't see that ordinance here, but. Oh, it's not the public one? Okay, okay, I was seconding that.
Motion was made by Ms. Haines De Giacomo. Mrs. Haines De Giacomo, second by Mrs. Foglio. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that item to our agenda by a seven to zero vote. Is something wrong? We haven't repealed, we're just adding that to our agenda. And then when we get to, 23129 will be the repeal. And then when we vote, that'll be the repealed, and 130 will be the replacement.
Do I have to request that one too?
The repeal is already on the agenda. We all right? Are we okay, Mrs. Cooper?
I think it would be helpful if somebody requested it. Yes, sir.
Requested. I request ordinance 129 repealing the previous purchase agreement.
You're making that motion right now?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Roskowitz, by Ms. Haines De Giacomo. Any discussion? This will repeal the original purchase agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will add that by a seven to zero vote. Are we good to go? Okay. All right. So tonight's ordinance, nobody seeing, nobody wants to comment on tonight's ordinances? Is it council's desire?
I think somebody does want to comment.
Somebody wants to come, oh, I'm sorry. Water, it's gonna be used at the water treatment plant down on First Street. So it comes out of their funds. Mrs. Held, you, you want to comment on any of the legislation? Or do you want to comment on another topic? Then we'll get to you in a few minutes, okay? Thank you very much for your patience. All right. So we have the ordinances. Are, is it council's desire to handle all these ordinances in consent agenda format?
So moved.
I do not.
Okay. Would you like to pull out ordinance? What ordinance would you like to separate? Ms. Holman, is it one or is it several?
D as in David, 12023-119.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a ordinance to handle ordinances? Can I have a resolution to handle ordinances? 116, 117, 118, and then 120 through 130 in consent agenda format?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Foglio, and a second by Mrs. Holman to handle all ordinances except for 119 in consent agenda format. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will do so by a seven to zero vote. Can I have a motion to waive the reading? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
I mean, I don't.
See, that's why you. At this time, then, we will have Mrs. Bergen read us tonight's legislation, except for 119.
Ordinance number 2023-116, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Rocky Road Paving for various street cut road restorations. Ordinance number 2023-117, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the purchase of a scag turf tiger mower. Resolution number 2023-118, a resolution honoring Lieutenant Dennis Dibble's years of service and dedication to the city of Ashtria. And you said skip 119?
Yes, skip 119.
Ordinance number 2023-120, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Eclipse Co. for the purpose of making repairs and improvements to the Highland Beach Storm Sewer Outfall. Ordinance number 2023-123, an ordinance to make supplemental increases and/or decreases, excuse me, to appropriations in the general fund, public health nursing fund, AMC and Court Special Projects Funds, sanitation fund, police fund, housing code enforcement fund, and WPC wastewater fund for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Ashtria, state of Ohio, for the period January 1 through December 31, 2023. Ordinance number 2023-124, an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept a federal emergency management agency FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. Ordinance number 2023-125, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Ashtria City Finance Director to cancel certain delinquent and uncollectible municipal income taxes for tax years 1980 through 2010. Ordinance number 2023-126, an ordinance authorizing the appointment of a temporary clerk of counsel on an as-needed basis and authorizing compensation for same. Ordinance number 2023-127, an ordinance repealing existing codified ordinance, section 157 dot 17, entitled residency requirements for the purpose of adopting a new section 157 dot, dot, 17, sorry. Ordinance number 2023-128, an ordinance enacting replacement codified ordinance, section 157 dot 17, entitled residency requirements in order to update the residency requirements of non-emergency employees of the city of Ashtria. Ordinance number 2023-129, an ordinance repealing ordinance 2023-101, authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Rising Properties LTD for the purpose of adopting a new ordinance, changing the terms of said purchase. Ordinance number 2023-130, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to purchase property from Rising Sun Properties LTD in an amount not to exceed $860,000 plus closing costs for the purpose of relocating Ashtria City Municipal Offices.
Thank you, Mrs. Bergen. Okay. We have, we will handle these items in consent agenda format. Can we entertain a motion to waive the reading of this legislation in its entirety?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spielman, second by Mrs. Holman. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading by a seven to zero vote. Can I have a motion to waive the charter requirements for two readings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Foglio, second by Mrs. Mills. Is there any discussion? Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and now we will vote on the adoption of the legislation. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
All those items of legislation have passed by a seven to zero vote. We have item, we have legislative item number 2023119. Is there a motion to handle this item of legislation? Yeah, you want to read this, 2023119.
Ordinance number 2023-119, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement with Nathan and Vicky Belcher for tax abatement at 100% for seven years for a new residential dwelling located at 217 Lake Avenue, Ashtria, Ohio, 44004.
I will move on the, on the manager's recommendation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Is there any discussion? I, we will. I gotta waive the reading of the legislation in the entirety. So I moved on waiving the reading of the legislation in its entirety. Mr. Crawford, you seconded that for me. Thank you. All in favor of waiving the entire reading?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We will waive the reading by a seven to zero vote. I will make a motion to waive the charter requirements for two readings of that legislation.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spielman. Is there any discussion? Would you please call the roll, Mrs. Bergen?
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
No.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
That item has passed by a six, waiving of the two readings has passed by a six to one vote. We will now vote on passage of that item of legislation.
Mrs. Haines De Giacomo?
Yes.
Mrs. Foglio?
Yes.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Spielman?
Yes.
Mr. Roskowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Holman?
No.
Mrs. Mills?
Yes.
And that item of legislation has passed by a six to one vote. And I believe that is all our legislation. And I believe that is all our legislation that we have this evening. Thank you for everyone for dealing with that as we worked our way through it and for Miss Bergen for reminding me to read it. So that was good. Okay, anything else? Alright, we will continue on with our meeting. Is there any unfinished business? We do have some new business. We have a liquor license request for food labs doing business as fire chicken sandwiches. We received this, they're requesting a liquor license for their business, their new business. It's on Lake Avenue and Sixth Street. Is there any discussion on any of this? Mr. Crawford, this is your ward. Do you have any concerns or any?
No concerns, but the permit, that's for consumption onsite where you can... Alright, I thought I saw somewhere it was for carryout. I thought I saw it somewhere in the paper. So it is for consumption onsite, alright.
Correct, yes, yes. So just to, I know we've had a, last, I think it was last week, we had where I had requested authorization to sign an economic transfer of one of these things. So in the case of fire chicken and for that harbor district, years and, I can't remember when it was done, it was a little bit before my time. There was designated an entertainment district down in the harbor area, which extends, they are like the last parcel within that entertainment district. So that opened up, I believe it was 15 different permits for that area alone. So that's why they're able to get just a straight permit. The, there is guidelines for this type of permit. I believe it's 75% of the sales has to be food and only 25 can be liquor. So the restaurants or areas need to follow those guidelines in order to get this type of permit. So that's why this one has become available to them.
Yeah, no issues at all.
Having to purchase it from an outside area.
Yeah, no issues.
Mr. President, just a question, Mr. Manager, how do you decide, how do you determine whether 75% is actually food and 25% is alcohol?
They would have to report their sales to the Howard Division of Liquor Control.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, thank you. Any other questions? Those are good chicken sandwiches, I can't say anybody's interested. I can't say anybody's interested, those are good. Okay. No other new business? Does anybody have anything for tell us something we don't know?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just real quick, good luck to all the teams out there playing their fall sports. Had some wins this weekend from schools, some losses from this weekend, but just hope all the kids have fun, develop, and don't get hurt and stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, yeah.
Also...
Along those lines, school is starting for a lot of kids. Some of them have already started, some of them are starting this week. So our biggest thing that we deal with every year is traffic around busing. So please, please, please obey the laws when it comes to how and where you need to stop when a bus is stopping and kids are walking to and from, and of course with the good weather. There are a lot of kids standing at the bus stops and things like that. So please be cognizant of our students that are out there and please have a safe and enjoyable year. Good luck to all the teachers, staff, and administration going back to, going back to school. We hope you have a good year.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, Mr. Manager, I'm curious, now that our roads are so smooth and nicely paved, what is it that can be done to deter the high speeds? With students coming back, it's even more important?
It's really about enforcement, so this is the, you know, we have the, you need to pave the roads because I'm damaging my car, we pave the roads and now we speed on the roads. So it's an unfortunate progression of that, but it does come down to enforcement. And I know that at least around the schools during drop off and pickup, there is a little bit more presence, so, and I know we do get yelled at for enforcing the school zone signs, but we are going to do that.
Children's safety is important to us.
Absolutely.
The other thing, I'm not sure if you all are aware of it, but it's official, the Boys and Girls Club have been approved to start here in Ashtria Bula, October 2nd.
Oh, good.
And that's going to be in the old Mother's Soros?
No, I believe they changed the location. It will be in the Huron Building that is a part of the elementary campus of Ashtria Bula Area City Schools.
Oh, well, good, that's a good thing, yeah. Thank you, Mrs.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I get a lot of calls on this, so I'm hoping parents will be mindful when you are waiting for the, you know, the kids and the parents in the car and they want to park at the stop sign. So you're coming down the street and then you're trying to get around to the stop sign, you're blocking the others, it's like an accident waiting to happen. It happens frequently. Over by me, it happens a lot. So I hope people are just courteous, I mean, you know, they're not going to melt in the rain or the snow, but just be mindful, the cars do need to get to the stop sign for safety. The only other thing I wanted to add, I heard on the news, I don't know how it is in Ashtria Bula, that there's an uptake in COVID. So I don't know if with our health department, are we monitoring the waters still or how?
Mr. President, we are still monitoring the waters and we have not received an alert from the Water Pollution Control Plant, however, there is an uptick at this time.
Do you know, somebody had called me last week about boosters. So do they have, like, when is that new one available?
I think I heard that it will be sometime in September. I think that's the latest for the newest that's going for the strand that's out right now.
Will you keep us updated on that?
Yes, I will. We will announce it.
Mr. President, I was just at the doctor's today and my doctor informed me it will be the end of September when the booster comes out.
Oh, okay, I'm glad, okay.
The new one, okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. President?
So it's not only, it's not only COVID, but RSV and the flu are also on the uptick right now.
And I think there is going to be a vaccination for that.
It's a prescription for...
I just, I, I'm hoping you can add to this. In the newspaper, it was about the Shea Theater, and I know it's been a big buzz. So I just wondered what you wanted to add to that.
Well, of course, they're just going to renovate it to put a dollar store in there. Right, isn't that the buzz that we always hear from some certain people around here? No, we, as you all know, I don't like to come out and talk about projects until we know they're going to happen. And I like to have the owners of those projects be the ones coming out to say what they're going to do. So this is something we've been working on for a while, so we've had vision and leadership and everything surrounding this project. The gentleman that purchased the Shays and other properties on Main Avenue also has done other projects in the city that we've been very happy with. I immediately, when he said he was interested in the potential of renovating this back to a theater, I still kept in touch with Michael Hurwitz, who we had here years and years ago, who is a renowned theater expert in restoration. I reached out to him, he immediately contacted me back, said I will absolutely make a trip in and visit with Mr. Ellis, who is the new owner. We went through the building again, we sat him in our offices, we sat the two of them in our offices for hours, let them hash it out. They're working together on this now. So Mr. Ellis, right now, as you see in the dumpster is out front, has been working to clean it out, to get some excitement around it, to eventually try to rent the front portions of the building as we continue to work back. It's not going to happen overnight, it's millions and millions of dollars to do this renovation. We are very, very confident in Mr. Ellis's ability to do this, along with Mr. Hurwitz, and I do have faith in the community. We've all wanted to see this project done. So we're really excited about that. This has also led to, this happened, by the way, because of some code enforcement that we were doing on this portion of Main Avenue. And we will continue to do code enforcement up and down Main Avenue, start crossing the tracks and going after some vacant buildings with terrible facades and things like that. We're hopeful that as people see this development happening, whether they have negative thoughts about the city and Main Avenue, the people that are willing to invest or putting their money actually where their mouth is rather than just saying it. And Mr. Ellis, the made-on-main project that was just done, are really stepping up and working with us, and it's been a pleasure working with them to get these things done. It's partners like that in our community that we need in order to move the city forward. And basically, you know, I don't do a good enough job of thanking the staff for getting these projects as far along as they are and for working with these developers behind the scenes. This is, again, I could have come out here months and months ago and said this is all going to happen, but it wouldn't have been right because we weren't to that point yet. So we don't announce things until we allow the owners to do that, and that's what happened in this case. So it's been very tough biting my tongue for all this time with what the plans have been for Shays. I'm glad Mr. Ellis finally contacted the paper and gave his statements, and we're excited. A lot of good things are happening right now in Main, not only Main, but around our entire city. If you haven't been by the Chestnut Village project, that thing is really coming along. It's really a nice project, the hotel, the hospital, housing starts. I mean, we have millions and millions of dollars being invested here, and we're hopeful that more people jump on board.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I would just comment, Saturday was a beautiful day, Saturday, and I love it when the boats pull up to the lift bridge. That's one of my favorite things to watch. And there was one there Saturday, and let me tell you, it was there for the, American Kirch, it was there for the longest time, and the lift bridge was up for quite a while. And I will say, nobody was honking their horn and nobody was yelling out, and I think people just enjoyed it, it was a beautiful day, big crowd of people down there watching the boat, you know, and we ended up having lunch down there and got some cream puffs at the FUBI Farms. But anyway, it was nice to see, and like I said, everybody was so good-natured about. That was nice to see, so.
I think that's one of the, one of the things that allows our port to stand out over others. We have, we do have such a tourist area down there, but it's because it is an active industrial port. You know, we have the rail yard, I know that it has decreased over time, but there is still product coming in and out. You have those vessels that pull right up to the lift bridge. You have the ship repair going on during the winter time. So it is a very, very active deepwater port. You have the dredging going on right now, which the Army Corps did meet with us recently to update us on all that stuff. We actually now have to start thinking about other adaptive uses for the dredge material. The aquatic environment that was built out by the break wall will be filled up in not too distant future here, so that project will already be filled and you'll start to see habitation come out of there. So we'll need to find another area for adaptive reuse of the dredge material, and those are the types of discussions that we're having, not only with city leaders, but with other partners in the townships and throughout the county about where to use this material next.
Good. Yeah, that's, even that big boat was parked there in the, the individual boats fishing, they were all going along this side. It's just really cool to watch, you know. Somebody will always post on Facebook in the morning, there's a boat in the river, so then I know the good. But, anybody else?
I do have one additional question. Does anyone on council have a sense of when the new gas station on Route 20 will be there ribbon cutting or opening or, no?
Mr. President, we have not heard of a final date yet. I think there's still, there's still some cosmetic things to do, I think, inside the building and then of course stocking it. But I haven't, I'll try to get you guys an update of when they, when they think they'll be finished with construction. It looks really nice over there. Compared to what it was, it looks pretty nice over there.
Between the road being paved and then that being a nice addition to that neighborhood, yeah.
Thank you.
At this time, we come, and we appreciate your patience. Anyone in the community who would like to address council may do so at this time. Just approach the podium and if you would share with us your name. And like I said, we appreciate, we appreciate you sticking with us.
Good evening. This is fun to be here and see all this. I've been around this county, the city for a few years. We moved here when I was six years old, so I could start school at Edgewood Junior High. And that was, that was a while ago. But I've been really concerned lately since we've been hearing so many things going on in the city. I'm so proud that the Shea is going to be moving ahead. But I, as I'm going through the county and as we get to talking with friends, everybody's concerned about what Petman's presence would be if they are to come to Ashtria Bula. And I don't know if that's finalized or not. And do you know that as people come to town and they hear about it, they're just like in shock that we would be endangering the beauty of what we have here? And the, what the harbor is doing and what, and traveling around and seeing the tourist business in the whole county is just wonderful to see that we're doing so many good things. And so I've been, I passed out to you, each have a copy of this, these two pieces that were given to me. The first one is the one that starts out with my daughter who came to town, and she lives in the Hudson Valley, but she loves Ashtria Bula. And she was just amazed that she heard about what the Petman situation was. So she went home and did some research on pig iron. And here she reports what she discovered and how many case studies and reports are causing harm to local communities, both economically and environmentally. There's lots, so many, and I don't know, I haven't, she went on and shows about what some of these communities have experienced. I don't know if we have looked at, I haven't heard anything, and I've not been able to talk with the people that might know, that if we were to open this factory, the areas that really need to be looked at are like environmental impact, the economic impacts, the social impacts, the health impacts, and the alternatives. And when I hear that, that pig iron factories emit so much CO2 and can really pollute a community's air, I think it's, I would like to know if we have looked at all of that and who is, who is responsible or what do we, what can we do? And it's, it's a serious problem, and when people, I talk out, go to meetings and talk to people and they, I say, and what do you think about Petman? And they think, oh, just, I just, I just hate the idea. It just is disturbing. And there's a lot of concern about the health and about the economic factors that might arise if Petman were to come to be a reality. On the backside of that same paper, I have a report here that Mark, who is, has come along with us tonight, and talking about the dangers of letting somebody in who's more interested in profits than the community's well-being. And I, and I read, and then today I was looking in a report to the Cleveland Newspaper recently, in the last few months, suggested that there would be 100 jobs. And that's what most of the people who don't want to stand up and fight or resist this, they say, but we need the jobs. I understand that the mechanized businesses or factories today, they don't need as many jobs. And to think that we'll have 100 jobs and that that would outdo what we're doing in the tourist business in Ashtria Bula County, does that make sense? I would like to have some answers and understand these things. And the report on the back that Mark wrote, he talked about that the, during the last public meeting, the Petman Pig Iron Plant was conducted by Zoom. I don't know if there's been anything since May 7, 2020. The company abandoned their pledge to partner with a third party that would recapture and sell their carbon emissions. They promised to build a foundry... Mark, do you need to come up?
Actually, at that time, what they said was they didn't have a contract in place with the company. So because they did not have the contract in place with the company, they didn't want to mislead anyone, so they actually went back and adjusted their air permit as if they were going to release all of the CO2 while they were still working on contracts. I cannot speak for them at this time. At that time in twenty-twenty, yes, they did not have the. That's correct. So, but what I'm saying is you're basing that on what was done in twenty-twenty. I'm not basing it on their word. What they've done so far is said at the time in twenty-twenty, when they re-upped their permit, they did not have a contract in place, so they did not want to.
That's a, that's where the questions that I have, that I really would like some answers to, or the, the community would like to know, is, uh, why has Petman chosen Ashtruba? It seems that their product is needed closer to other areas. And, uh, how might the plant affect the many proj, projects in the harbor? And how would Lake Erie be affected? Are we concerned about checking out the, what was going, where, where the, uh, our lake is going to be protected? These are big questions that, 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 uh, people want to know, and we don't seem to be have answers for, and so there's a lot of anxiety out there in the community of people wanting to, to see, to get more information and to know that all these things are being looked at. And I have not, and so the, the, I think the amazing people of Ashtruba County have been working hard to create a beautiful environment that's attracting thousands of visitors. And questions are natural, and people who care want to learn as much as they can. People who were not aware of the potential goods struggled to accept the lodge, which has become such a beautiful asset. Maybe this is something of the, the same nature, but we need to know. Are we giving careful attention to the expansion of tourism in our area? And all of these things have to be looked at. And I would just, uh, I came because I really wanted to open up discussion or to hear some answers or to find out what, who's, who is making all the decisions on all of this? And what are the, you know, what are, what are the benefits? And do the benefits outweigh the liabilities that might be coming to Ashtruba? We have a beautiful place. I love it. I want to see it stay beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hell.
I didn't give you my name. My name's Luana Hale.
I saw it on the paper.
I've been around here for a while and, and, and love Ashtruba. You have done a lot for it.
Thank you very much.
Dennis was one of my students.
Anyone else who would like to address council? I, I don't think we're ignoring you, uh, Mrs. Hell, but I, I think, um, I, I don't want to speak, but we, we really haven't, uh, you know, uh, Petman was an issue, and we really haven't heard much from them as a council for, uh, I would say a couple of years now. So, um, I, I don't think we would be able to answer your question specifically. Uh, I know when, um, they had their meetings at Kent, they had their environmental meetings and so forth. We were going. And, and that, that would have to be two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen.
Four years?
Yeah, four or five years ago. So to be honest with you, since then, I don't think council has had much information. So I don't want you to think we just ignored your, you, you know, your discussion, and you're, we appreciate your paper. They will become part of our minutes. Certainly, we're going to read them. Um, but I, I don't, you know, I don't, I wouldn't have anything to add to that because we just haven't had much further discussion or comments or from the company, you know, so.